In Tuesday, May 14, 2024, 3:03 PM. For second item on the on the agenda is invocation. Oh, wrong one. Invocation will be given to us by Councilmember Chris Haney. Anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so voluntarily by standing up and join us for a moment. Councilman?
Dear God, we we thank you for this day, Lord God. We thank you for for bringing us all here, Lord God, so that we, as a city father, can can move things forward, Father, not backwards like you've you've protest programmed us to do, Lord God. You've told us to always be going forward, Lord God, and never looking to the left or to the right and just always going forward. And we want to bless this council, Father, with the right decisions. We want, Father, to to be the the our decision makers, Lord God, so that we know, Father, that it came from you. And we just thank you, Father, for this this great city, Father, and and continue to bless it and with every bless this city and everything that we do and that you do, Lord God. Let it be a let us be a blessing to you too, in Jesus's name. Amen.
May be seated. And these things don't slide. Brand new. Can everybody hear us in the back? A back wall? Back row? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. The rest is being a backseat Baptists. They don't want to talk. They don't want to get engaged. Uh, we're gonna move on to item three, provide a the projected 2024 water outlook, updates related to CRMWD. Mr. Walker?
I appreciate you having me over today to to visit about water supplies. For those of you I may not have had a chance to meet, my name's Cole Walker. I'm the general manager for the Colorado River Municipal Water District. Wanted to kind of give a presentation today, kind of where we are water supply wise and kind of some of the projects and things we've got going on at CRMWD. You know, if you guys have any questions as I'm navigating through here, feel free to to ask as we go through and then at the end, of course, I'll have a be open for questions as well. Wanted to kind of talk a little bit about CRMWD today, our current water supplies, deliveries, like I say, climate outlook and and projects we've got going on. Wanted to start now, kind of who is CRMWD? You know, we are a special law district or political subdivision formed back in in Basically, we were the our member cities out here came together and, you know, the West Texas region was growing at the time and realized that that they needed a regional water support, uh, a regional water source that was gonna cost more than any one city at the time could afford on its own. So our member cities went together and formed CRMWD to provide water to the cities. You know, we're obligated to to meet all of our member city water needs as they grow, no matter, you know, how much water that that requires. When we were formed back in the early 50s, we had a served a population of about 40,000. Today, that's over 600,000 people. Wrong way. Yeah, our member cities are Big Spring, Odessa, and Snyder. Each of our member cities appoint four board members to the to the district. We're governed by a 12-member board. I will say, City of Odessa is well-served by their their four directors. Each director serves a a two-year term. Here in in Odessa, our board members are are Gary Hayner, Mickey Jones, Dan Holman, and Jimmy Goats. So I think this evening at your at the the council meeting, we've got a couple that are that are up for reappointment. You know, Mickey Jones is currently serving as our president, has been on the board for for 18 years and would like to continue to serve if if that be the will of the council. Dan Holman's been on the the board for about 12 years. He's our vice chair on our administrative audit committee and would like to serve as well. Both of those guys represent you guys well, I will say, on our board. Other customers that we do serve, you know, we we provide about, I would say, 80 to 85% of the the water for the city of Midland. We probably provide about the same for the the city of San Angelo, 20 to 25% probably of Abilene's water, almost all of Stanton's water, Grand Falls, and then sell water to Miller's v. Duel as well. Our mission is pretty straightforward. It's to provide an an adequate supply of the best quality water possible at a reasonable cost for our service area. And, you know, mainly today, I'll just be talking about the the supply side of things, but but know that the quality and the the reasonable cost are a key part of what we do as well. So when we talk about water, you know, we have two different sources of supply. You know, it's our the first one that we rely on the most is surface water. You know, I'll kind of go through the the lakes that we have. You know, we built Lake Thomas in 1952. It will hold a little over 200,000 acre feet when it's full. And to kind of put that into the scale, we sell about 65,000 acre feet per year to all of our our customers total. So currently, Lake Thomas is at about 19.6% of capacity or has 39,000 acre feet in storage. These numbers are as of May the 1st, kind of looking at a a lake graph or elevation graph of the lake. You know, we've been slowly declining, lake elevation-wise, all the way back to to August of 2021 at Lake Thomas and Lake Spence, and even a little bit further back than that when you get down to Lake Ivy. So it's been, you know, going on three years at Spence and Thomas that we we haven't really seen any significant inflows. At Lake Thomas, we've declined about 14 feet. Looking at at Spence, it was completed in 1969, holds about 517,000 acre feet if it was full, currently at about 15% capacity, has about 78,000 acre feet in it. You know, it's kind of like Lake Thomas. It's declined about 12 and a half feet since August of 2021. Looking at at Lake Ivy, you know, it's the largest of our three reservoirs. Was completed in 1990, stores about 554,000 acre feet. It's currently at 26.2% or 145,000 acre feet. Looking at it, you know, the drought has really hit it a little more than what it has our other two reservoirs. It goes all the way back to April of 2020, but since we've seen any significant inflow there, the lake levels have declined 22.8 feet there over the last four years at Lake Ivy. Looking at it overall, lake elevation-wise, you know, we we've over the last three years, we've declined about half of our surface or half of our volume in our lakes. We've either used or lost evaporation. We've lost it's declined about 300,000 acre feet total. So where that leaves us currently, we have combining the three reservoirs, we have about 20.8% of our total capacity or 262,000 acre feet in storage. I will tell you, you know, we never never do have our lakes 100% full. It has not happened, you know, over the history of the district. We've had individual lakes full, but not all three lakes at the the same time. So, you know, if we had 25% capacity in our reservoirs, we remain in in really good shape, truthfully, on providing all of the water needs just from surface water alone. The other source we use is groundwater. We do have two wellfields out west of Monahans that are our primary wells that we utilize. We have about 64 wells capable of producing about 73 million gallons per day. We are limited in pipeline capacity and what we can bring back back into to Odessa and into our system to 45 million gallons per day. And then, you know, we also have two additional areas for future development. We've got about 7,600 acre feet, I mean acres, in Winkler County that's on a UT lands lease that goes through 2049. And then we we have some more property that we had purchased adjacent to that back in the 80s as well that we could develop for future groundwater as well. Overall, in our groundwater reserves, we have in our developed wellfields about 1.7 million acre feet in storage is what our hydrologist estimate, and in our future development areas, a little over a million acre feet. All total, about 2.7 million acre feet or and we we think about 70% of that would be recoverable. So when, you know, you get down to that, we have about 2 million acre feet that we have access to there, either currently developed or could develop in the future if we needed to. And keep in mind, you know, like I said, that we we utilize about 65,000 acre feet total each year. We have modeled in our wellfields, our hydrologists looked at, you know, if we were to to run our our wellfield all out at 45 million gallons per day, they have have looked at at how the effect that would have on the aquifer in our wellfields. And we would see some some decline in water quality. The the groundwater table would decline as well, but for 50 years, we would be able to sustain that 45 million gallons per day. You would see some drop off where we would have to go back in and drill some additional wells and and do some infill drilling there, but we could get that that volume to last 50 years if we we needed to. Typically, looking at it, we don't like to pump over about 8 million gallons per day average for a year out of our wellfields just to kind of maintain the quality. We feel like that's a sustainable rechargeable amount. You know, we really would rely on the the higher volumes of flow out of that wellfield just for summertime peak demands, and we would back off on it in the winter when we we didn't have surface water. It's the way we operate that wellfield. Looking at our water deliveries, you know, our this past year, we delivered almost 24 billion gallons of water. Our highest deliveries actually came in 2000, 2002. Looking at the the top green line is our our total deliveries. You see a sharp drop off in 2011, 2012. That's when we were essentially out of of surface water. We had a little bit of water left in Ivy, but the other two lakes were dry. We did have water restrictions in place in in 2011, 2012. So our water deliveries dropped down that year, but have continued to, you know, to recover and and increase since that time. Looking at the city of Odessa, their the usage this past year was about 8.7 billion, which was the highest in the history of Odessa. It's continued to to increase. So basically, what we've seen is, you know, the Midland-Odessa area continue to grow, water demands continue to increase. How Big Spring, Snyder, and some of the other areas are remaining pretty static on what they're they're taking. Looking at how that the distribution of water, you know, in the wintertime, Odessa will take about 20 million gallons per day is what we've been delivering. In the summertime, that's been peaking about 33.6 million gallons per day. That's mainly just due to outdoor watering and things of that nature. Right now, kind of looking at the climate outlook, you know, it's not a not a positive outlook. We we monitor the the drought conditions across the state, soil soil conditions, and how much, you know, stream flow and things we've got into the reservoirs. Right now, you know, the the southern and western portions of our our drainage area are in either abnormally dry conditions or are in moderate drought. You know, I will tell you, we've have had some rain since since this graph came out. Across the watershed has probably improved slightly, but but overall, it's still pretty dry across the the watershed. You know, looking at the forecast outlook, you know, we typically receive the bulk of our inflow into our reservoirs in at two different times of the year, you know, the spring or the fall, basically from either May through July in the spring, early summer months, or in the September, October timeframe in the fall. Looking at both of those, you know, our area is still kind of forecast for below precipi- below average on precipitation for the spring months and then highly likely that it will be below in the fall as well. We're trending towards a La Niña cycle, which is is not favorable for our our area. On the flip side of that, they are forecasting above-average temperatures for those same same two periods. So it's not a a great forecast from the weather outlook. But I did want to tell you, you know, we we still remain in good shape, you know, looking at we monitor our water supplies regularly. And looking at it, we we feel like we've put together a 60-month projection on how we plan to meet water demands of our our member cities and really don't feel like, you know, in the the next 36 months, even if we didn't receive any inflow, we would have any trouble meeting those demands. You know, looking at our we tend to we always try to use surface water first if it's available and then supplement with groundwater, and that's kind of what shows up in this graph. Looking at at our we plan for a worst-case scenario of about 25% of our annual inflow because even on our worst years, we still get inflow into the reservoirs. If you look at our our worst 60-month period on record, we still receive 30.3% of our average inflow. Look at the worst three years on record that we've had, about 21%. Or the the worst year on record was 2009, and it was 9.7%. So we feel like that 25% is a a pretty conservative number that we can plan on having available from our from our our flow into our our lakes. You know, based on where we are, even with the climate outlook not favorable and but with the, you know, available water supplies we have, we don't foresee any kind of need for water restrictions or anything from the district for the next 36 months. I would say we still remain in good shape, to the point that we should be able to to get back to a more favorable outlook on on climate outlook. The other thing I wanted to talk briefly on was projects and things that we've got going on. You know, we have several large projects going on right now. We've got some repairs down to our Lake Ivy Dam where we're we're actually recoating all of the gates there. It's about a $9.2 million project that's wrapping up this summer, so we'll be excited to have those those back in in good shape. The other projects I'll mention is here in Odessa is the 46 42nd Street Pipeline Replacement. Going to go in essentially from the the Coliseum over to the water treatment plant with a new 60-inch pipeline and replace all of our infrastructure that was put in back in the the 50s there, valves and all the pipeline to to better serve the the treatment plant here in in Odessa. So that's a little over a $5 million project. We're should bid that this fall with construction kick taking place early next year, really, when we're we're looking to kick that project off. Future projects that we've got coming up, you know, we do have quite a bit of required maintenance on our system. We have eight pump stations right now that are a little over 50 years old that we're looking at replacing, going through those. We we replaced quite a few of the older stations, but got several coming up. So we do have quite a bit of system maintenance, just keeping our up with our infrastructure. We're also looking at expanding our Ward County Wellfield System. You know, currently, we can bring in about 45 million gallons per day of groundwater into our system. We could expand that system up to 65 million gallons per day. You know, one of the the goals that the our board has has put in place was to try to get the the our system in a position that we can meet summertime demands for our our member cities without any kind of water restrictions, even if we don't have any lake, any water in any of the the lakes, which that's a a pretty big shift from the way the district was built. You know, all of our original sources were surface water. To do that, you know, you have to to really shift our system to where you can rely on on groundwater. Currently, we need to have water in at least one of our reservoirs, you know, plus our the groundwater we have access to, to not have to have any restrictions in place for our cities if we didn't, you know, if we start running out of surface water. We do have enough groundwater to meet wintertime demands, even without any surface water. So we do are in pretty good shape there, but we would like to expand that and continue to get in better shape, I will tell you. You know, we also are looking at additional sources of supply. I will tell you, we are actively out there looking at at different groundwater sources now and evaluating those, whether it makes sense to, is now the time we start looking at acquiring another source of water. That was my presentation. Anybody have any questions on where we are water supply wise or?
Council, any questions other than pray for rain?
Yeah, we do. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to item four, discuss the extension of the Republic Service Disposal Agreement. Mr. Beckmeyer?
Okay, currently, we have about three years left, I believe, on our current Republic Services disposal agreement. And what I'm asking for is the council to consider to go ahead and extend that for 10 years. I've asked council, legal council, if that's okay. And basically, the response I've got has been yes. What we've been doing is working very close with Mr. Joe Spano. Joe, if you'll come up here. Good Texas boy that we got here from San Angelo, by the way, in New York. But anyhow.
I got here as fast as I could for the record.
Joe has Joe has been great to work with, and by doing this, just on the very surface, we're gonna be saving the city about $5,600,000, almost $700,000 over this 13-year timeframe. Joe has some more specifics on that. You know, I'm pretty simple when it comes to this. What's it gonna save? It's gonna save quite a bit of money for the city. And I'd like to open it up to Joe. I know he can probably answer a few more of the questions.
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Beckmeyer. Appreciate the opportunity today, and I appreciate Mr. Beckmeyer calling me out on where I'm where I hail from. I'm I'm gonna hide it as much as I can in my accent. I'm I'm working on it. I've been here a long time. You'd think it would be gone already. But the city has been great to work with on on this. I think that this is a great opportunity for the city. It's certainly a a great opportunity for this partnership. We call them partnerships with Republic. And, you know, when we look at where we are today with rising costs, I think, as you well know, there is nothing that is that we do every day that is going down. And same goes for us, right? So when we look at doing infrastructure improvements and when we look at new equipment and and doing any type of improvements at the landfill, we look at long-term, right? And so everything is going up, up, up. And so this was a a unique opportunity because of the timing. Y'all about to invest some money into your solid waste program, and we want to invest money into our landfill. So this is a great opportunity to make sort of a package deal, a longer-term deal with the city. And, you know, with the amount of volume that you bring, other than ourselves, you're, you know, one of our largest customers, our largest customer. And so it was a good opportunity for us to put our heads together and and Mr. Beckmeyer made what I would think would be a very good opportunity for the city today, so.
Council, any questions?
So what are the terms of the 10-year extension? Same same price, higher price?
Uh, so, right, so the 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 pricing is actually going to go down. And also, a part of that is your annual rate adjustment is, as we know with everything else, is up in the air right now. So when you look at inflation, we don't we wish we had a crystal ball on where inflation was headed, but we don't. And so typically, you know, the city runs, you know, anywhere from five, five and a half, sometimes 6% a year on an increase. And John negotiated to where we're going to fix that. So for the next 10 years moving forward, you all are going to be able to budget your landfill, your landfill business with us for 10 years with with the rate sheet. So John and John has a copy of the of the proposed 10-year rate sheet. So rather than every October, you know, 90 days prior to that, you know, we send your public works, our our folks send your Public Works Department, hey, this is where this is where CPI is running. You guys, I think, at the current contract's like 75% of the CPI. So what we did was we took that down. It's gonna save you another point. So we took that down to a fixed four and a half for the next 10 years. So, you know, kudos to Mr. Beckmeyer. He did a he did a very good job working with me and and negotiating a a very positive deal for the city, for sure.
So instead of the rate increase that we're about to get for the next month, we're gonna get a rate decrease and we're gonna fix an interest rate, which, sure, it could go lower, but it's not. If you've been watching market conditions, it's not. And we're gonna have it fixed. So that is something that I haven't quantified. As far as the numbers go, it's actual decrease in our rate that's saving us the $5 million.
So was was there, in the short term, is there a provision to help us with trash pickup since we're short of?
Absolutely not.
No? That really makes me feel good.
No. I'd I'd rather say it in a positive manner like that because it makes you feel better.
No.
But if we look, and I don't believe we we have Jesse here today, it has it has actually gotten quite a bit better. And you just look down the alleys if you if you don't believe a drive around town. Besides my one neighbor that likes to fill up our trash can no matter how many times we fill it up, it it's the guys have done a Herculean job. Republic was willing to help us with that, but we've got the trucks on order. We are keeping up with the trash. Jathan's back here. Kudos to him. So, no, we didn't process it in.
I was just curious.
No, it's a good it's a good question.
Council, any other questions? Terms of the contract for notification for terminate, we're because of what we experienced, an exit, we still have the 180 days, even though we're extending from 2027 to 202030?
I remember about 180.
180 days, six, eight months?
Basic terms of the contract are the same as they've always been.
And it would be?
It's it's pretty much still the same. It's just a lower rate, a lower price for the city.
And and we get that. It's not it's a lot out of the goodness of of Joe's heart here, but it's not just that. They've got a long-term co- they've got a long-term customer at that point. The terms of the contract are basically the same with the lower rate. And it's it helps them when they go to their financing people, just like it would help any businessman here, to say, I've got a contract, I've got a customer for the next 13 years, not for the next three years. And it's a win for them, it's a win for us.
Okay. All right. Council, any other questions?
Just a thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
By the way, Joe has been tremendous to work with. He really has.
Appreciate you. We're gonna move on to item five, discuss the scope of work for Corolla Engineering Incorporated for the design service and removal replacement of 100-foot, 1,000 linear foot, 23-inch CIP VCP. Mr. Niles?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. What I'm here today is wanted to talk to you, excuse me, about a sewer line issue that we're having at West Second Street. Just kind of give you a little introduction, what the problem is, the observation and the degradation of the sewer line, what we had Corolla Engineering come out and do, the projected cost of the engineering fees on top of the projected cost of the project itself, and then the kind of the timeline and the scope of work, and then a brief summary. So just to kind of give you an introduction, this is West Second Street. We have a 24-inch ductile iron line. It was installed in 1979. It's probably it's approximately 1,000 feet with 650 feet of that as an aerial iron line. It's in it's verified clay pipe next to each manhole, and these lines also incorporate three manholes, two upstream and one downstream. So after recent field inspections by our crew, as well as several other folks, we spotted several i- areas that were leaking and were degraded in tremendous fashion, to say the least. We also found areas that it was leaking. So I did instruct my staff at that time to go and do whatever they needed to do to make sure that that line was no longer leaking, and they did accomplish that. So as of right now, the line is not leaking, but it is in tremendous shape. These are just some of the observations. You can see where the ductile iron is starting to crack and and erode. It's the whole bottom of it's about ready to fall out. There are several i- areas of the pipe that we don't even want to touch because we're afraid it's gonna fall in. So it's it's in terrible shape. There are several spots along the pipeline that, like I said, showing active leaking. It's several reinforcement concrete pipes supported showing signs of degradation. In addition, there's damage to the pipe and the three manholes that are around it. So like I said, we got Corolla Engineering to come out and they did an assessment, and we would like to go ahead and partner with them to get this line fixed and rehabbed as soon as possible. Just to kind of give you an idea, one of the first initial reactions was that we could go in and slip-line the pipe and basically or pipe-burst it on the each side of the manhole as well as slip-line the ductile iron. There's no way. Once they go in and start cleaning out that pipe with that chain that they use, it's just gonna tear it up, right? So that's not an option. It has to be completely torn out and replaced. But again, working with Corolla Engineering, they came up with their project management and coordination at 64,400, design phase at 188,700, and engineering services during the construction of the project, $121,900. That gives us a grand total of $375,000 in engineering. Based off of their observations and conversations that we've had with contractors, we're estimating that it's gonna be 1.3, 1.4 million dollars to fix this line. That's just the construction side of things. And again, I've worked with legal and also purchasing. This is considered a public health issue, so this is an emergency basis, so we can move forward as soon as possible. As soon as you give me the okay, I can move forward. The projected timeline, Corolla will provide the design service. Corolla will provide provisions and replacement of all three manholes and the bypass servicing so we can do the construction. The construction crew will come out, do their their pre-set up and all the mobilization, and then they can commence on the work as soon as we give the authorization to move forward. And again, And again, I, you know, I know I keep bringing your problems and I apologize for that, but it says very outdated infrastructure, that cast iron is extremely degraded, and we're to a point where, again, and I hate using this phrase, but unfortunately, we're at a catastrophic failure. So this line needs to be replaced as soon as possible.
Kevin, real quick, give us a, orientate us on the, on the location of the line. Does this line run in east and west? North or south?
North, south.
Because we're going with a map, and then I looked on my phone, I'm trying to find it there. Is this north of, of the interstate?
Yes.
Okay, so it is running north and south, right?
Yes.
So by 20 and Second?
It's in that draw.
It's, I was going to ask, that's a draw, right? Okay, okay. Real quick, and maybe this is a question for Corolla, as I was looking at everything here from doing the surveys, setting the right-of-way, is this going to sit? How we, so are we looking at the complete right-of-way right there in front of us?
For the most part, that's the entire line that needs to be replaced.
And then the temporary workspace?
Yes.
So when the construction happens, have we taken this off-line? What are we doing?
We're bypassing it.
Okay. That was looking to be my question, you know, how are we going, because this, this thing needs, still needs to operate, you're going to bypass and then break it down?
Yes.
Okay.
The whole line, the line will be bypassed from the far one manhole to the other manhole, and then they'll tear it down and commence the construction.
So we got a total of 1.3, we got, we're limiting the amount of change orders to 40, correct? Is that what I'm seeing right here in front of me?
Yes.
What type of contingency money is in this? Is it within, is it within the 1.3?
We haven't considered the contingency funds.
You haven't considered yet?
No.
Okay.
And again, these are just estimates.
Okay.
This isn't the actual, again, we would be bringing you the contract for Corolla at the next council session for final approval.
In two weeks.
To get, to get going on that side of things.
Okay.
And then we, we have a contractor who's ready to roll.
Do we need to move in two weeks, go straight to council instead of work session? That we, if we need to go and take action?
Yes.
We're not delaying another two weeks?
That was the plan, Mayor.
Yeah, that's true, yes.
Okay. Let's just do that, let's bypass work session.
Like I said, I wanted to take this opportunity to explain to you what's going on. I didn't want to hit you with the $375,000 contract right off the bat.
Okay.
And Mayor, we've gone back and forth. This hinges, if this, if we don't replace this, we're going to have a public calamity on our hands with sewage everywhere. So we need to replace it as soon as possible.
Counsel, do we have another questions?
Are you replacing the piers?
The piers are good, I think, for the most part. There might be a few that need to be replaced, but they're, they're going to try to save as many as possible.
Explain the process of bypassing it during the construction. What, what does that entail? What do you?
So basically, you insert a pump into a one-manhole, and you pump it out, and you set line above ground, and you bypass it to another manhole. So that's, it's basically the same system that's underground, it's just above ground. But you've got to use, you've got to use pumps to get it up out of the manhole and into the other one. But they'll set up all the piping right along where they're working.
Okay. So where are these funds coming out of?
That's a good question. So I, I'm bringing to you at council meeting tonight, reallocation of some impact fee money that we had designated, or that we had money in the Line Q project, that we can now take some of that impact fee money and move it into the Line Q project. That'll free up about 1.2 million dollars for me to use somewhere else. So it's not going to cover the full cost, but we're getting close.
And before the, the contract comes in two weeks, I'll work with Kevin to have you at a certain place where that's coming from.
Yeah. Well, Dan, can we use impact fee? Because that's supposed to be used in the area in which it's collected.
The sys, the sewer system is one area.
The sewer, you can use impact fees for the sewer system for the entire.
I don't think I remember that, but.
Yeah. I was, I was, I was a little, it is. We checked on it this last meeting, board meeting, and being my first board meeting, I was a little bit shocked by that, but also, that's a good thing.
True.
Yes.
Because there's not much development in that area, so we need the impact fees from other areas to pay for this.
Right. Because the impact fees we used on Fodry came from District Two, that whole area. So I just, that's what I remember, so.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
So do you want me to bring the contract for both the contractor and the engineering to you at the same time?
Yes. That way we're not delaying.
Well, I was going to do the engineering for sure, and then.
Yeah.
I have a contractor lined up, but I have not, we have not come to terms on that.
Yeah. Let's, let's not delay this.
Yeah. All right. Great. Thank you.
Talking about bringing it up tonight?
Oh, you got another one?
Council meeting?
No, two weeks.
Okay. Any other questions? This I. Now we're going to move on to, Adam Seck's presentation by Johnson Controls, yes, yeah? Okay.
Okay, on this Johnson Controls, I'd like, because it's not on my calendar, what is the date of the next work session?
28th.
28th, May 28th. I would like to pause here and ask the mayor to ask to postpone to a date certain of May 28th, the next two, we'll need to do them separately.
Who's table?
The next, don't table anything, let's postpone them to a date certain of May 28th of the next meeting that we have. Because what we've done by putting both of these on the agenda, Johnson Controls and PSI on the same project, is created a competitive situation, I believe, that may need a RFP process, RFQ, I don't ever know which letter to use there. And I want to research this with counsel to make sure that we're not in violation of statute that ensures competitiveness across the state.
So you're asking for both, for the May 28th?
Well, I can repeat all this, I can repeat this again.
I'm sorry?
No, just for the Johnson Controls.
I can repeat it again for number seven, but it's going to be the same thing.
Okay. So are they both here?
One is here, one is not.
One is here.
Okay. So JCI is not here?
But JCI, JCI is not here.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and move on to item seven, presentation, Counsel.
Well, you need to get the.
You're going to postpone number six.
Postpone number six.
Do we need to table it? I thought we weren't tabling.
That's the same thing. Postpone number six.
So do we need to make, make a motion to postpone it to May 28th and then second and have a vote? I move to postpone item six to May 28th.
We have a motion and a second to table item six to May 28th, work session at 3:00 PM.
To, correction, postpone.
Let's get away from table, thanks.
Well, I was going to say, I was going to vote against it because we can't table for two weeks. We can table for later on this meeting.
It's just to postpone.
So basically, it is to postpone presentation until May 28th. All those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Motion passes unanimously, we are postponing item six to the May 28, 3:00 PM work session. Move on to item seven, presentation, council performance, performance services to discuss the assessment of Bob Dibbitis. Mr. Niles?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask someone on the council to move to postpone number seven for the same reasons that I just explained.
Shall move?
I have a motion, so I have a second, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor to move, postpone item seven to the May 8, at 3:00 PM. All those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against, indicate by same side? Motion passes unanimously. All right, move on to, well, this, I told you, we're going to get out here at 4:30. Item eight, presentation by Ryan Hutchinson, Chief Technology Officer for My Government Online MGO, Mr. Fisher.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council. So we have a special guest today, Ryan Hutchinson and Ken Jenkins from My Government Online MGO. So in 2020, we had purchased the software, and the purpose was to get, for, at that time, it was for city departments online to use it. It's very beneficial, there's a lot of advantages to it, and Mr. Hutchinson and Jenkins are here to discuss that in a, in a minute. So we just wanted to introduce them. So today, it's just going to be a presentation of it. The original contract was only for the four departments, and now we're in process, working with legal, working with IT, different departments, to enter into a new contract. So the new contract will now include up to 15 city departments, and so Odessa is going to be one of the first cities in Texas, if this is approved by y'all, to have most of our city departments fully go online. As a, as a planner, the advantage of it, planning and permitting, development services, is you can track your building permits, you can track your, your zoning cases and things like that. But it has other features as well that he'll talk about, including work orders, asset management, getting into the more technical and financial realm. So, so the purpose today is just to present the technology, and then we will be coming back with the, the new contract shortly, once it's reviewed, and we'll bring that to another meeting. If you all approve that, then we can start getting the departments online. But from my experience with this company, and just as a civil servant here in the planning department, they've been very good to work with, I wanted to thank Marlena Munoz as well from Building Permits. She's been here longer than me and has really had a good start in, in getting us going, and to all the department heads, as well as city management, for helping us along with this. We have a lot, they have done some of the work already, so we've built a lot of those workflows and those processes while we're negotiating the new contract. So again, that was a plus, so it didn't slow us down. So without further ado, we're going to have Ryan Hutchinson, he flew all the way in from Houston this morning, so we appreciate him here today. Thank you.
All right, hello, everybody. Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Ryan Hutchinson, and I'm the Chief Technology Officer with My Government Online. Now, our software is already in use for the city, as mentioned, with permits and licensing and quickly expanding into other areas. But we have a complete solution for basically all aspects of city government, from permits and licensing, planning and zoning, code enforcement, and all the different divisions of Public Works. And one of the really big advantages, when you have a system that's integrated this way, is from the land management, of being able to take a look at a piece of property from any department and seeing the full history of what's happened there, where you can see if there's been street repairs in the front. You can see if there's an open building permit, if there's been complaints for code enforcement, all in one place. Now, what's really interesting about us is who we are. We are not a private company. We're actually a government agency, just like you are, and we're a political subdivision in Louisiana. So we are one of the economic development districts, and we got into this 18 years ago because, much like you, we needed software. And we were frustrated with the high cost of software and the lack of customization that was available in the private sector. So we built our own system, we created a partnership program that any jurisdiction could partner with us, and it's taken off like wildfire. And today, we're now in 23 states with over 70 jurisdictions in Texas alone and quickly growing. If you were to visit us in Houma, Louisiana, where we're based, this is our facility, it's about 20,000 square feet, we own it outright. We've been recognized through our partnership program by Amazon City New Cloud Innovation Challenge Contest, we're a two-time winner, we're the only jurisdiction to win that award twice, and it came with a $25,000 prize. There's also been many others with AT&amp;T and others, and it just goes to show being recognized by these large technology companies what government can accomplish when we work together. Now, there's a number of key questions that the public works through the different divisions once implemented, that we'll be able to answer in real time. You know, one of the things that's, as council members, you often want to know, how long has a work order been open? What has been completed? I just got the call, is it done? Is a part of it's done? What cost has been spent in resolving the work order in terms of labor costs, material costs, equipment? Asset cost tracking? Does it make sense to continue to repair this asset, or should we just buy another one with the full lifecycle management? Where are my assets? Are they in the city? Were they stolen? Which is a more common problem, a lot of jurisdictions realize, but knowing exactly where they are and knowing for sure that city assets are being used for city business. The preventative maintenance, when is it due? Is it being done? Can work orders, inspections be easily associated with an asset? The features and functionality that you are getting and acquiring through this software will give you the ability to answer all of these questions. So there's a number of key functionality that comes to be able to deliver, to be able to have that type of insight and data modeling. So things with the asset tracking, with our GPS units on vehicles, being able to get real-time information, the number of engine hours, the actual location, different maintenance tracking, unlimited customer reports to model the data, any type of visibility, a full-fledged document management and work order system to be able to assign lists of tasks to a city worker and track progress as they go. Now, one of the first parts to really take advantage of this is the public portal, providing citizens and residents an ability to take a picture of a problem and report it through a work order system and be able to track the progress in real time. So that's exactly what this is going to give you. You already have parts of it with permits and licensing and others. This is going to expand that software application, where your public will have one app, they don't have to go to different places, there's not multiple logins, one login, one app that they can do any city business through in terms of the scope of what we're talking about. The, the picture here is Escambia County, Florida, very large jurisdiction, about 300,000 people, and they use us for just about everything, even public records requests. So the public can go to one place, submit whatever it may be, and it's going to route it to the right division where they can immediately start working on it. The website with the mobile app, it's fully branded to your city's website, so it's very easily to integrate in, and it looks like the same application. There's all different types of features that can be customized, there's a carousel there that you can put in your own custom content if you wish. You can customize all of your service requests, so whatever options that you want to make available, and the departments decide they want to make available to the public to submit, you can do so. There's no limit, it's fully customized with the terms, the description, the information to educate the public on what option they're submitting and where that's going to go. You can customize the questions, whether it makes sense to ask for an address, or maybe it makes more sense to give them a map option that uses the GPS on their phone to show their location and then just move the marker, hey, here's the, the pothole down the street exactly right here that I'm reporting. Now, the also comes with this is a phenomenal, really, really great customer dashboard, as you can see here. This is going to allow a resident to track all issues that they have with the city, not just Public Works, but everything. Whether they have an open permit, a code enforcement complaint, a request for a pothole repair, whatever it may be, one dashboard that they're going to see real-time progress, how these issues are being tracked. So just phenomenal value, there's no cost to the residents, a free account, just like if you were signing up for a Facebook account, that they'll be able to gain this type of online, real-time resources. You can do all different types of other options, so some departments may have assets in your GIS system, that they now want to display these assets on a map, click on maybe a sewer main, and then create a work order off of it. You'll be able to do that, as we see in these screenshots here. You have all different types of features for your field workers to be able to make their day more efficient. You'll have these great drag-and-drop dashboards that you can see any city staff, and you can drag and drop to assign a list of work orders to them, and it just automatically pops up on their tablet. So when you're making adjustments for real-time emergency information, you can immediately see if someone has 15 or nothing for the day, and drag and drop and balance the work orders, and it's popping up on their tablet to go and distribute. You can, this is also going to marry together your GIS and other features. You can draw GeoZone, so if you want to show, I want to search an area to see if a work order exists in that area, or if I want to see if we have a backhoe in this particular area, you can draw a zone there and do that. You can also do things that, if you want to get a real-time alert. You can also do things that, if you want to get a real-time alert, that maybe an earth mover has moved outside the city where it shouldn't be, it can send you an email that, hey, it's going 70 miles an hour down the highway, 30 miles out the city, might want to look into that. I can't tell you the number of times that we've had a city had a very expensive piece of equipment actively being stolen, and they're getting an email about it being carted off down the road because of this system. Those are always really fun when you get those calls. But here's a great example, how you can see everything is married together, you're bringing everything in to one pane of glass, if you will. Now, all the data you have in your GIS, where your equipment is, where your workers are, what open work orders, all in one place where it's very easy to see what's happening right now and make management decisions to use these resources most efficiently. All different types of details, you can see on the vehicles, how fast they're going, engine hours, many other different types of things like that. Again, with the geozones and geofencings, other looks of just lots of different things that you can do with it, you can even generate maps, so if a department needs a quick map to bring to council, they can easily generate that from the system and show, hey, look, here's a number of open issues for Council District Three, or whatever it may be. Now, when it comes to efficiency for the field workers, what's one of the biggest things that they really waste a lot of time each day? They have a list, maybe 20, 30 items, where do I go first? What would be the most efficient use of driving distance? And it takes them away from having to think about how I'm going to get this done to where will be first that makes sense. Well, the software can figure that out for them. They just simply press a route button, and it will take from where they currently are or where they selected to do the first work order, and it will figure out the shortest driving distance in order all the different stops. So now they don't have to think about it, they just take the tablet, route it, and they can follow the list, and that would be the best use of gas for them, and the computer does all those calculations. It'll also give them turn-by-turn directions. So if you have new employees that are unfamiliar with the city, it's going to help them get to those stops for them. Time, material, equipment costs, all the different details for the departments that want to track that, how many workers, how many hours, what are their rates, what equipment was used, FEMA codes, so when you have disasters and you have people that have to use certain equipment trying to get a FEMA reimbursement, we have features for all of that. You can see here is an example in the screenshot where there's a work order, where different equipment and labor have been added, and it's giving you a total cost, what it costs the city to go out and complete that work order. So now you start to generate these types of details to see what you're spending on certain projects and even districts, if you wish to capture that. Now, another really big deal that we do is the customer reports, and I don't know anybody else that does this, but we provide as a service unlimited customer reports at no cost. So while we have a number of great out-of-the-box reports, as a council, as department heads, you may have special ways you want the data modeled, we can do that, and it doesn't cost more, you're not incurring a bill. We're just simply rolling up our sleeves, working together to build the reports and model it the way that you want. Now, these are real reports in these screenshots that we have with other customers. So you can see we have KPI reports, the fleet management here is for Baton Rouge, they have over 1,300 vehicles with us, they do maintenance, and they track every single day what their cost is, how many are open, getting closed, and making sure it's going in the right direction. We have the unit job cost history reports, things with lifecycle management, being able to see if it's reached a certain percentage where it makes more sense to replace it. The jurisdiction has complete control over all of those different metrics, just things about job management, what's open, what's closed, and reports that you want for that. Other project cost details, in-kind billing, if you have a department that's billing another one and needs to do the invoicing for that, that's all available here. And then finally, the free support. One of the really things that has made us unique and has been such a great partner with other jurisdictions is there's no upfront cost. All there is, is a monthly fee that a jurisdiction pays, you don't even pay it until you go live, so there's no risk, and we do all the setup, we do all the customizations, we do all the training. When we come on site, we don't make any money on that, all we ask is that you reimburse us for our travel costs. So I can send a trainer here in Texas for about $2,000 for a week. So it's extremely price competitive for what you're getting, there is no one in the private sector that offers more features and functionality for the price than us. We have a very different motive of doing this, and it's not to make money quote-unquote, and it's very simple. We want, just like you do, the best software possible. And the way that we've come up to do that is through this partnership program by having other governmental partners pay a monthly fee, and it's in an enterprise fund, just like you have enterprise funds, that's what MyGovernmentOnline is for South-Centric Planning. So with these reoccurring fees that we're getting from jurisdictions all over the country, it goes right into the development, features and support that just really is returned right back to you. So that's why we do this, it's how we're able to do it, it's been very successful over the last 18 years, and we would love to continue and expand the partnership with the city of Odessa. Does anybody have any questions?
Council questions?
I have, I have two.
Yes, sir.
I'm presuming that the MGO has its cloud, that this is, this is, all the information is going to. So you would be responsible for backup on the-
That's correct. So we use Amazon, primary data centers in Virginia, and we roll over to Seattle.
Several, several, yeah.
Absolutely. So it's the best in class that you can get, and all of the backups that we do handle.
And the second question is, to be able to look at an asset, I think that's very valuable, you use the term an asset as a property, and you could go back and look on the history. Okay, we installed the software, does it start accumulating that history from that point, or can it start populating history into that asset from the past?
It's possible to do in the past if you have good data that's available to import. In some situations, that may be the case, some cases it may not, we won't really know until we get in it, we see the type of data and what the imports look like, but absolutely, from the time that it started to be used moving forward, absolutely. The historical's a bit more trickier, and it's really a case-by-case basis of how successful that'll be.
Thank you.
That was my question, when it comes to historical data that goes back to early 1900s, that would have to be imported manually, if we chose to do that?
In some situations. Now, some things, like the data that you have in your GIS and property information there, that's going to read from there in real time. So you probably have, especially going that far back, property information in your GIS that's already there, so when a new work order is created, it's going to pull that information in real time and make it available.
We just sent a lot of questions, it'll take about half an hour to go through. So who's the lead on this, on the city side?
It would be Elizabeth.
The three usual suspects, okay.
You have IT that's also been, Tony has-
Yeah, he's right behind you. He's hiding behind you.
He's spreading the blame.
They're going to take over one, and that's all.
Did you know that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sir.
Thank you. I've got a, I've got a lot of questions. Can I shoot an email? Who would I shoot it to? All four of you? Okay. Well, because I don't want to spend another 15, 20 minutes, because there's a lot of questions I do have. It has to do with, you know, the historical data, data, will it conflict? You know, then it goes into equipment. What's, well, let me just shoot the emails, I don't want to spend, yeah.
Yeah, we're already working on it.
You see, you see, and then also, what's, when we're talking about a physical property, what's the biggest piece and what's the smallest piece? I mean, are we, what do we track? And so those are the kind of questions I have. So I'll shoot those in an email, because I don't want to spend the next 10, 15 minutes talking about it.
One, one real quick question on that historical data, again, thank you for being here. Basically, if we can get the data into a CSV form, you're going to be able to import it.
Yes, and assuming that it's broken out in a way that it would match up. So some-
We'll just have to break it up in a way that it would match.
If you do that, there's no problem.
Okay.
Mr. Hutchinson, just a question for, like, the application for the people to be able to use. Are you saying that they would be able to, a lot of the emails that we get are for code enforcement violations?
Right.
So they would be able to go onto this app and submit that code enforcement violation or submit any kind of violation directly, and then they could track the progress of it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they could take, use their phone, take a picture of their neighbor's tall grass, fill out the information, and you're going to have all of that, the exact location, whatever questions you have, and a picture of what they're looking at.
Everybody laughs, because there's no violations of grass here.
Yep.
It bleeds. Yeah. You wouldn't know that, because you're produced.
Yeah, we're in a, kind of a wet area. We'll be happy to give you some of our water.
You were here when we, you saw the drop pictures from-
I did.
There you go. No, it's kind of, yeah, any other questions on this?
Well, I just think that's terrific that they can track, you know, people from the public can track violations as well, because as I drive around, there are a lot of code enforcement, Elizabeth, don't laugh at me, you know what I'm saying, it's true, there's grass up everywhere, so it's just, just for that one item.
Well, yeah, it's cool, because it's also for, like, building permits, too.
Yeah, I agree.
They can track the progress of that, I mean, this is, it sounds like a great software program.
The building permits discussion way back there is really what got us beat first really into this. We had MGO, we're using it to an extent, but that's when we really started, started getting into it, and this is, because it's a government entity, it's much more economical than anything else that we've looked at, and it does the job that we need it to do.
What were the first four initial departments that were, were tagged?
The planning, zoning were on, they never went live, it was us building permits, which obviously have been live since 2020, the GIS integration, and then code enforcement.
Okay. So my question is to staff, is, I mean, if you have it available for the public for code violations, I see that as creating a lot of requests? Are we going to, how are we going to be able to cover those? Because you know we can track them.
They'll filter to each department where it needs to go, and that department will take responsibility for what they need to do.
Okay. In our experience, and that's a great question and a common question that we get, but what we've seen with other jurisdictions is the people and the residents that make code enforcement issues, they're doing it no matter what. So now you have an easier way to track it instead of the frequent phone calls that you're getting that could get missed and so forth.
I just want to make sure we got the staff to make-
Follow through.
We'll soon find out.
Any other questions?
So what's, what's the monthly fee? You said it's fee-based?
It is. So it's broken out over the different modules, I don't know if y'all want to talk to that, I don't want to overstep.
Well, we don't-
This must be serious, it's real.
Yeah, they all three.
What are you going to have for it?
I don't think they broke that.
The fees, sorry.
I guess based on the modules.
Okay, so it goes by, I'll let you explain if you want, we have different modules for it. So I think in, should I just do the total?
Yes.
So we are going to be coming in two weeks and asking for a total of $200,000 for-
Which, which I've already found savings to pay the 200,000.
And that's just, that's the end of this fiscal year.
Yes.
Just for 12 months?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
That's for seven months.
Seven months.
Seven, seven months, correct, but it continues on the next year for the same amount of fee.
Okay. Council, any other questions on this?
And it's hard to nail down the exact price until we know how many GIS-
GIS units is what it was going to make the biggest difference, because everything else is a flat fee.
The units that we have out there on equipment and whatnot, that's going to vary, you know, how many are we actually going to have, are we going to have 100, we're going to have 30? And so that's not a significant variance, but it's hard to nail it down exactly. To my remembrance, right now, we're looking at about 31,000 a month, including all modules, all licenses, and all GIS equipment.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
In the other communities, what has been the learning curve in the community when it comes to the citizens, and primarily the H bracket that often uses the most?
Sure. We've found it's been very well received, especially when it's released with a joint training. So oftentimes, the jurisdictions that do the best with it is they'll do a public outreach where they invite different members or do virtual training, you know, usually targeted based on different departments. So like permitting will be for building contractors, just the general public, they might just do a virtual meeting, but where they'll invite them to be able to log on or come in person, the jurisdiction will explain the policies and procedures of what's changed, because almost never do they implement the software without making changes to take advantage of automation. So the jurisdiction will explain why this is going to be different, what those options are, and then from our side, we'll actually demo the software and do a training on how to use it, and then people understand, they're not confused when it goes live, and it's very well received.
How are we going to roll it out to the public? How are we going to follow it?
So we already have been using it for the past three years.
Yeah, we've been on-
But we are, we are still trying to take into consideration all of those people that might not be tech savvy. So our plan is to be able to have kiosses on the first floor, so like they experience it daily, and where they have people that literally walk in with their plans and everything, and we have to have the personnel to be able to import everything into the system, because that's how it gets routed. So then it's based on phones, and they, correct if they're wrong, they, they get messages whenever there's an update to it, and they automatically can call them as well. But we are going to plan, we already have started planning to do a lot of outreach and do videos in order to get the message across.
Yeah, and we will also provide a marketing kit, QR codes and flyers that you can put out, where residents can just scan with their phone and easily load the app and other materials like that to assist with that.
Okay.
And there's no cost for that.
Okay. That's going to be the biggest challenge.
And our goal is working closely with Edgar and GIS to be able to teach them how to use the feature there, so it makes it a lot easier to be able to find things.
Okay, sounds good. So two weeks?
Correct.
All right. Council, any other final questions on this?
I guess a sneaky question, I'm just curious about, with the capacity of the software, is AI used in it at all, or no, or a percentage?
We do have some projects that we're working on with AI, but currently with what we're getting, we don't have, kind of in the wild, you see any AI features. A lot of times, you'll see certain things that AI, but it's not always the best tool for what you're trying to do, AI would not be the best tool for this.
Thank you.
Mayor, we are shooting for two weeks, but we are going to get a final contract from them. If you remember, this is the contract that past administration never put before council.
Yeah, no, that's-
So we want it done right.
Yeah, I recall that, there was a big debate about that.
Yeah, so hopefully two weeks, but it will get done.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else? All right, see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item nine. Discussion purchase of 24 white and one black 2024 F-150 police responder, 4x4 trucks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like the council to consider a motion to postpone to a date certain of May 28th work session. Because of some information that we got today, we may have again created a competitive situation, and we need to compare with council to determine whether it'd be appropriate to hear this today, and-
Council, I need a motion in a second for item nine to postpone to May 28, 3:00 p.m. work session? So moved. I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye. All those opposed indicate by the same sign.
Mr. Mayor.
Motion to pass the announcement.
The public can thank me for shortening this agenda.
I really appreciate that. You will get kudos at the end of the day. They laughed at me when I said we're going to get out here at 4:30. Item 10, discuss the purchase of water meters. Ms. Rodriguez. Good afternoon.
The item I have is to consider the purchase of water meters. Resolution number 2023R-46 adopted on July 11, 2023, authorizing the city to enter into a performance guarantee contract between consultant with Performance Services Incorporated. Approval of this agenda item authorizes the purchase of 400 complete 3/4-inch Sonata Ultra meters, 101-inch Sonata Ultrasonic meters, 21 3-inch- 21 3 inch octave meters, two 4 inch octave meters, two 6 inch octave meters, and one 8 inch octave meter for a total of 526 meters. This is an estimate to keep up with demand for new home developments and for meter replacement stock at our central warehouse. The total purchase cost is $248,595 and 65 cents. Thank you.
Are we asking for consensus? Council, any questions? These are the meters that we're to improve our capabilities to be able to measure.
Yes, just to make sure we've got what we need.
What we're losing on about 10% minimum?
Yeah, this I'm estimating to cover the next three to four months, hopefully.
Okay. Council, any questions on this?
Just for clarification, how these these meters read?
How are these meters read?
The guy hiding right there that's giving us this look.
Yes, I'm giving someone a look. Radio.
They are. Okay, that's my curiosity. Thank you.
That's what we've been putting in. Yeah, that's it. These are the ones that we had discussed at length for some time ago. Any other questions? If not, I'll go around the table for consensus to move forward. Mr. Matha?
Yes.
Counselor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Very much. This is your first time presenting?
It is.
I thought so. Did good. Item 11, discuss funding municipal projects using bonds. ODC revenue bonds. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, Mayor, I asked for this to be put on the council on the agenda. Seeing as we're having a whole lot of problems with infrastructure, I'd like to just pass these out. Everybody can have one of these. Pass those down. These are the financials for ODC. And, you know, I guess to preface this, what I need to say is is they've got a substantial fund balance and it continues to grow. The number of projects they have long term and short term are pretty negligible. Short term, it's back on the second page. Short term. Let's see, short term. Well, that's wherever it is.
Looking for short term commitments?
Yeah, short term commitments, 2.4 million. But the long term is only 24 million, but of that 16 million is in the CERO. And I know that's been postponed. 16 million.
That was 18.
Or 18 million.
18.
18, 16 left.
They gave the two. Yeah, so and then and now that's been put on hold. As I understand it, I could be wrong, but my information is it was on a 10 year hold.
And so, you know, it can be, it probably needs, I did talk to Kayla about it, and, you know, it probably needs to come off the books as a long term obligation.
Mayor, council, I understand that ODC is probably going to take action.
We don't know that.
We don't know that, but.
No.
It's on the agenda. I don't know what they'll do, but it's on the agenda, so they may or may not.
Right, but that being said, there's an 86 million dollar fund balance there. And the research that I've done with Legal and with Jeff Moore, ODC's bond counsel, and the emails Dan's got. That revenue bonds could be floated out of ODC. Now, the best way to do it, we don't know. We had a conference call with George Wilford, our financial advisor, yesterday. Couple of different ways to do it without increasing any debt to the citizens of Odessa. That 86 million dollars is sales tax money. And infrastructure is one of the things that we can use it on. It's kind of narrow, but we just got to figure out the best way to 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 do this.
And remember, Mr. Thompson, we're only a type A.
Right.
Type B, so we still have a lot of research to try to figure out how we could possibly go about doing it.
Legally.
Legally, yeah, and bond council's given us a couple of different ideas of how to do it. So, but there's a lot of money there, and I think, and just remind the council that that 86 million dollars, each one of us, it has a fiduciary responsibility to spend it wisely. And right now, they've got nothing big enough to that they can't, and the cash flow is good enough. So we're asked George Wilford to come up with a with a amount of number of bonds we could issue and what the debt service on that would be out of those bonds. And we can go up to 40 years. John keeps saying he can find money for 200,000 for this contract, and I'm sure he is, but that's going to quit sometime. Now, you know, it's, we don't have the money to do all these projects, and we've got to get a lot of these projects done. I took the weekend going through the water master plan that was done for the 2019 COs. And I know that this council doesn't have any appetite for COs. But the revenue bonds are done with cash flow off of sales tax through ODC, one way or the other. And their cash flow is a million one to a million four a month. It fluctuates just like ours does. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of potential there. And I just think we'd be irresponsible not not to get bond counsel with Jeff Moore. Jeff Moore says we can do it in his email. He's their attorney. They still disagree with me, but that is as what it is.
Who disagrees?
Oh, I think I think ODC or some people at the present ODC, I know who disagrees. They don't think we can use it this way, but that doesn't matter right now. The point is, we need to get it, we need to get it analyzed. We can't, you know, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about the Darrington Water Plant. I know we got Johnson and PSI that are going to give us some solutions. I did find out yesterday, I think, John, that what was that fund, that that water, state water fund?
Yes, the state, the state water water board.
I understand the state water board fund, you know, we tried to do that with the with the water plant.
I've got a meeting in two weeks with them.
Good. We tried to do that with the water plant, but they weren't, it wasn't big enough to handle it. They could only do $300,000, which is nothing. I understand they got another big pop of billion six or whatever it is. So that's that's another resource as well.
On that, and we don't need to get very far off of this.
No.
But Senator Perry actually saw our problems over the weekend and initiated some contact with the state water board. We don't need to get off this. What he said is true. The critical part of this is at this point, not speculate at all. What infrastructure we can do, it's very narrow. The critical part is waiting on Mr. George, Mr. George Wilford to get back with us with his information. Because it's not just on amounts and times and things like that, but what we can actually do. We ran some scenarios by another day, some things that we would like to do, we can't do, some things we would like to do, we can do. And we need to explore it more. I appreciate you bringing this up today because it needed to be brought up. And I think most everyone is in agreement. We have some pretty major needs. So thanks, Steve.
Yeah, sure, John. And my my big concern is we're throwing, just to give you an example, we're throwing 3.3 million of the property money at the Darrington wastewater treatment plant. That's going to buy us five years, I think, is what we, is that right, Kevin? About five years? And a new plant's going to take seven to build. So you don't want to keep throwing good money after bad. So we've got to make some kind of a long, in my opinion, some type of a long range, long range solution instead of just slapping Band-Aids on. Because those, that's what we're doing now everywhere we turn. We're running out of Band-Aid money.
Do we, do we have a a rough estimate of how much it would, how much would it cost to address all these infrastructure problems that we have?
No.
Because before we even, I think before we even consider a revenue bond, we kind of have to kind of know how much are we going to, are we going to?
Well, well, what we're going to have to do is identify what it is that you're going to want to.
Yes.
It's easy and it's truthful to say we have a lot of needs. It's not realistic to say we're going to float any kind of revenue bond to address all these needs. We're going to have to say, okay, the Darrington unit, what are we going to do there? What are the options? Unfortunately, we didn't get to hear some of the options today because of some timing issues. What is, what are we going to do with the water infrastructure? What are the options? We're going to talk tonight some about that, not so much the options, but some of the things that we're going to do. But I can tell you, and I'll tell you again, the difference between working downtown on 50, on 75 year old infrastructure and working out there last night. On a few year old infrastructure is not in Dave because we turned off the water and most of the people in here, some maybe, but most people in here didn't lose water last night. Where everybody did Saturday. So. Again, this is all, this is all relevant. This is all critical. But we can't say until we've determined what we're going to attack first, second, or third, and what the price is going to be. When you're looking at a new, a new wastewater treatment plant, that's significant. When you're looking at keeping the wastewater treatment plant running for the next 15 years, it's going to have to. Till you can either one, wait, wait four years to an presidential election, have a bond election. Then add on the next seven to nine years to get it built and pass TCEQ. So keeping it open 15 years, that's going to be significant also.
It's going to be hard to do.
There's no easy answers. I appreciate Councilman Thompson for broaching this one, but not but, and. It's something that we need to consider, and it it always, it always could be a shell game too. We need to spend money here that does qualify. We spend some of this money there and move money over. It's a first step in a conversation.
Right, and this, and the state water fund is another one because that just came to me yesterday at another meeting I was in where I found out how much was available there. So that already has changed once. And what we asked George to do to answer your question, Mark, is to do it backwards. See how much debt service their cash flow will support. And we can go as long as 40 years, but I don't, I personally don't want to go 40 years, but you can go 40 years. It just depends on the cash flow and and how that works. But that's what, that's what George is there for, is to run those scenarios, and he's been, he's willing to do that. So I hope the council will reconsider that hard because we're at a crossroads, I believe that's a good word. And every day we, every day we wake up, something new breaks, you know, another one, another break today. I mean, there's always something every day. So it's just, we can't wait.
No, we can't. Definitely has to be addressed.
Real quickly, Kayla, on on these numbers right here, we have 52, 588, 626, unreserved. Is that with the latest numbers that we've gotten?
These are, these are February.
Are you looking at the financials?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
But these are February.
Yes, these are February. I did go ahead and do some additional research after we talked, and I updated the reserved amount. So essentially, there are some commitments that have not been captured on there. One, because they've been approved after February, or two, they weren't put on there because the payments have not commenced. And so total, short term and long term together committed, we have about 45 million dollars.
I was at the last meeting, so I had heard that.
So 16, but 16 million of that is still in the CERO.
But the other one is.
So if you back that out, you got.
Well, on the NACERO, Bug Night volunteered to give it up. Now, that action hasn't taken. I know that's going to be discussed. Two also, I saw here there's 600,000 for the Ellen Noel.
Yes, sir.
Now. There was a heated argument about that. We were asked to go ahead and approve it, and the money has not been allocated. Because the NICS only allows sales tax to be used for an archive. The NICS for Ellen Noel is a museum. It went, you know, and so we have it on record. We had some members out there saying, go ahead and do it, even when we were breaking the law. I see that still on the books. We said we would allocate the 600,000 and give it to them, or, you know, the council would approve it, but we haven't gotten the NICS. So I would like for us to be able to follow back on that one. I I know it's it's insignificant in in the in the case of 45 million. The other one I would ask if, now, there's no doubt that legally we can do revenue bonds. And legally, we can do it for 40 years based on the monthly and quarterly and annually revenue. But I would like the council to be fully informed on the narrow scope of what we can do it for and not do it for. We find two prime examples that we did with the complex and what we did with with the Crossbook. We all realize what we have a dying need for our infrastructure. It's been neglected for decades. Love to be able to do it legally if we can. We put on our thinking hats and find and work along with ODC instead of in contrast and find solutions for us to address our aging, neglected infrastructure. We're all in, but we have to be able to be creative, but within the bounds of what we have to do because we're bound by what the 4A. There are some 4B things that we can do, but we want to work within those scopes. And I would just, I would proceed with caution because I don't want to set a precedent that we're, that we're going to have, future councils are going to have to abide by and then be penalized in the future. So when we all know we need to need, we need to do it, we need to get creative, we need to do it as quickly as possible. But remember, we do have some boundaries, and Moore has been a great source. Sometimes I I completely agree with the guy too. And so sometimes I'm like, you know, it's frustrating.
Yeah.
But I understand, you know, he's there. We have him there for a purpose, and in the end, we have to follow. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So thank you. Thank you for putting this up and talking about.
I just want to bring everybody's attention to it, Mayor, and I I understand what you're saying, and I just, it's time somebody brought it to the table and said, we've got to do something. We've got to.
It gets the conversation going for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 12. Want to have a real quick discussion. I know Mr. Cornell is up to speed on this. I've got some calls from, and I've had some in the past on the school speed zone at Levi's Elementary. I don't go there often enough. So their speed zone, is it set on 87th or is it set on Don?
On 87th to 45.
It is, it is. So are they, are they requesting even more reduction in speed?
Well, the school doesn't really know what to do. They're they're seeking out zoning to look at it. We need our traffic engineers, actually, to do an evaluation on that zone because we're growing.
Yeah.
But the, and it's, it's not, it's not all day. It's just basically 7:10 is we're going to have the drop off of the students and 3:20, you're going to have the pickup of the students. That's where they're in the bind.
Is there a school zone? Light fixture there?
The funny thing about that is I have driven around all of the elementary schools and some high schools in my area, and I've actually counted all the safety signs. What's common in all of them is that while school are, while it's flashing, slow down. I mean, it's everywhere. When I drive around Bryce, it's, there's one sign on the side tributary, and that is just a one safety side, not even on the 87th side. But there's, there's, it's been starting with parent concerns. It's gone to, I have met with the principal down there and sat out at pickup and watched that. They are, they're concerned. They've been a T-bone so far. It's the only thing that's happened. And then recently, thanks to you that you passed the information on that the PTA was interested in what if that zone could be reevaluated, reevaluated and looked at.
So I had a discussion and we had, and we talked about that. I think your suggestion is valid, and I think that we should explore it. All the worst I can say is no.
Yes, sir. Go ahead and. Uh, they had some like driveway in the back where they could, you know, stagger, stagger their cars and go around and do pickup and drop off. So they have some space they can use with the extra cars.
Utilize your parking lot in the back because the thing is, is the other, the other thing that's happening is they spill, as they pick up the student and spill. Sometimes you want to do the left turn instead of the right turn, causes another issue. Joseph had come up with an alternative. I think that if we can facilitate a meeting and suggest that. And present and show it how that that flow would work and see what objections or any adjustments they can do.
And at Compass, they have different like staggering times for pickup, like different times for like first grade, second grade. So that that's another option.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, like I said, I don't know the solution. That's why we've asked smarter people to be able to look at it and do this. And Joseph came up with that suggestion. So if you can get with Joseph in contact with the principal and everything, the PTA and have this. and have this meeting, and just make a suggestion and just work together on this. Because I always get a concerned grandfather who was told to pick up the grandchild. They're not used to it, and then they get shocked. Then I get the phone call. It never fails, and so.
Well, I agree with Councilman Cornell. I've been by there fifty times, and those cars start lining up, and they go all the way down to the, to the west. And same, same thing happens over Compass. It's just, I mean, and some of those kids can jump out behind one of those cars, and those cars are, it's big, wide, thoroughfare, and they're just hauling it through.
Well, that's why they made the changes at Permian.
I've got those delineators up there, yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Something's got to be done.
Okay, so if you guys can, what's on that if you, to your district? I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Going to move on to item thirteen, discuss the Amendian City Charter, section forty-six F. Change the period of time a person can serve on six, from sixteen years to twelve years total. I've asked to explore this. This is something that I have discussed and researched, asked Dan to go ahead and pull. There's also something out of Big Spring. They particularly had, so what, what year was the term limits put in?
Uh, it was twenty-twenty-one, I believe.
Was it twenty-twenty-one?
Yeah. Was it for us?
No, it was further, further, further back, wasn't it?
About two thousand and four for Odessa.
Okay.
But like Big Spring was like twenty-twenty-one, I believe.
Yeah, and so, we used to have two-year terms and limited terms, and we went to two-four-year terms, and that's it. But when the council at that time presented this, I spoke before the council and said, you can play musical chairs here, because the, the spirit of the term limit is to serve your term and you move on. But there was nothing to prevent to move diagonally up or down. And so, this happened in other cities, and Big Spring particularly happened. And what they did in Big Spring is, you serve two terms, you set out a term, then you can run. Then you can serve two more terms, then you have to set out. And so, there's breaks in between. Commoluted. So, I wanted to keep it simple, pose it as a discussion to amend the city charter this year and limit the, to sixteen years. That means two consecutive terms.
And, and remember, Mayor, this will have to be on for a vote.
Yes.
Public vote.
Yeah, yeah, it's got to go, it's got to go on the, on the ballot in November, if, if.
Yeah, whatever you got to do.
But I wanted to get it up for, for discussion, to absorb it. Also, if anybody has any alternatives, this isn't written in stone. This is just a suggestion for simplicity. But I welcome the, the debate, the discussion. Email it, talk to Dan, and we can bring it back. We have a time limit. We have to have all this. If we, let's say the council has a consensus to want to do this and does it. What's our time limitation?
Yes, council will have to consider it and proceed for the ballot, probably at the end of July or first part of August.
Okay, okay. So, I would absorb it, tweak it, you know, redline it. Anybody has a suggestion? If you're fine with it, with this twelve or sixteen.
So, right now, as it stands, each term is four years and you can serve a total of two years. But.
Two terms.
Two terms. But I could, they, I'll just use myself for an example. I could serve for District One through the two terms. I could move, or I could run for at-large during that time. I could move to a different district. When my at-large position is up in eight years, I could run for District Three.
As long as it's six months before the.
Right, and then after that, I could come back and serve as mayor.
Which is another at-large.
So, um, yeah, that's, that's definitely a problem.
And that's why I called, called it musical chairs then. And, and also, there was another scenario that nobody thought of. And I said, one person could actually serve out of one district. And that one district, and that's twenty-four years. And that district could be in Midland, Midland County. And that, nobody ever thought about that. And so, it was scenarios I was placing. There's a spirit of what the voters voted for, but there was never a thought process about the musical chairs. And so, why anybody would want to serve twenty-four years, I don't know.
We're going to have a new, a new hospital out here.
Well, you got to, well, you obviously, we, we all do it for the money. That's no doubt about that.
Oh, yeah.
But, but it, it's something that I knew in December of fifteen in the runoff. It was something I wanted to address. And I've had that ordinance from Big Spring in my hand. I actually spoke to Shannon, the mayor then, and the two citizens that actually pushed the initiative and took it to Mayor Shannon at that time. And it was primarily that you had a council member that was playing musical chairs, and they wanted to be able to say, look, you can do that, but you're going to take a pause in between. That's when they, the, the citizens voted for. But that's what, that doesn't necessarily mean because it works for Big Spring and works for any other city. So, if anybody has any thoughts on it, just, just start having a conversation on it.
I have, I have one thought, not that I ever intend to run for mayor, but I know that I wouldn't want to be a one-time, four-year mayor. So, my thought process is, once you run for at-large or District One or any of the positions, the only, each district could move up for mayor, and that's it, and be done. So, don't limit that. Say, Councilman Cornell or Haney or even Monta decided to run for mayor. Even if I ran for mayor, I wouldn't want to be a one-time, four-year mayor. So, I would like to see maybe the term limits, that you, you don't play musical chairs, but if you had the aspiration to move to mayor, that would be the only exception.
So, you would be fine with the sixteen years?
To be, yeah, if you're moved for the aspirations to move to mayor only.
And not another council.
And not another council position.
We'd have to see what the wording would be like.
I mean, I don't know if that's a possibility, or I mean, sit out.
Anything's possible, it's just being able to put in a wording where people can comprehend it when they're voting for it. When there's resolutions on the ballot and, and, and people are trying to understand it, I always tell them to read it, yes, and then read the resolution on the ballot with the word yes. And then read it with no, and then read it. And then you'll get understanding. Because some wording, no means yes, yes means no. And so, and it's purposely done that way. We need an English major in order to come in here to be able to help us with that language, but, and I'm, I'm fine either with twelve or sixteen. The spirit here is, is to make it harder to play the musical chairs.
Yes.
Because I think that violates the spirit of what the citizens intended when they put in term limits. You know, theoretically, the term limit is always at election time. That's what I've always viewed it. And I never saw the necessary why you have to limit it, because I think every election is a term limit in itself. But, but because there's apathy is why this is, you know, that's the reason to do it. I'm fine with the sixteen. I have no issue with that. Does anybody have any other discussions and opinions on that?
Just, so when I saw this on the agenda, I, I was trying to figure out what, what your reasoning was. So, I went and looked at TML, and the cities in Texas are all over the board. But it seems like the most common is twelve. Is, is what the TML's handle, or whatever that website is. That's, the biggest ones are twelves. But they're up, but there's some that are eight, and there's some that are three-year terms. So, it's all over the board, but majority is, the majority of them are twelve.
Mayor, as I read it, it says, changing the period of time a person gets to serve from sixteen years to twelve years total. Now, when I see that word total, that tells me that after a person has served twelve years in any capacity in our local government, city council, mayor, whichever combination, that's it. You're no longer in the picture, run again. Is that what, what I'm understanding this to say?
That's how it's written right now. It's like I said, it's not written in stone, but it's to try to live up to the spirit of what the voters voted for.
And then, and then, excuse me, then the other part that I honed in on was previous year as well, previous, prior to the twenty-twenty general election. So, for example, like in your case, I know you served as a city councilman back in the nineties somewhere. Is that, is that, would that fit into that?
Yes, I served three years.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm just trying to do some figuring here. I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, so right now, I'm, I'm going on seven years.
Okay.
You know, the, the going forward is limiting you now is to two terms. And this one's basically is, is two four-year terms plus one. And that, that's twelve, and then you're done. Then this is saying, if someone has aspirations from going from the council to mayor, then you're limited only to be a one-termer. So, by going sixteen, you allow a council member to run for mayor from the council seat after they've turned out to run for mayor in the next election, and then be able to serve two terms. That's what the sixteen would be. Now, since it is a four-year term, if you are an active council, and you're on an off year, because the at-large, the two at-large positions are even years, you would have to resign your position in order to run. Now, if there wasn't, if it was less than a four-year term, you could hold your seat and then run. But even that comes with some limitations, because of the date of, that is left from the time that you have to file and, and the election, I think, within one hundred and thirty-five days. And if you exceed that, and the reason why I know this, because that's a situation that could have happened in, in, no, in Midland. Because they have three-year, three-year terms. And so, you can get really convoluted and lose. This is why I wind up putting it simple. Either do a twelve or a sixteen. That means two for, yeah, do two, you know, keep one, one term as a council member, run for mayor, you get two terms, and sixteen, you're done.
And just, and trying to go for all the hypotheticals on this. If, let's say, we elected to go with twelve years total. Somebody serves a twelve, total of twelve years, can they sit out four years and then come back? Or is that?
You would have to put that language in.
You're done.
Yeah, you'd have to say, and, and, and instead of doing that way, it'd be easier to do two four-year terms, sit out four years, and then run again. And then, it's the break, but there's no limit. You could wind up doing it, but it, it. If, 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 if the citizens were gracious enough for you to take four years, and then you, you run again, and you get elected again, then you're doing something right, because they haven't forgotten about you.
I don't want to come back after a break.
So.
He broke.
But absorb it, make recommendations, wind up putting it out. Like to put it back on for discussion again in two weeks and to kind of solidify something by June. If we can, if we can do that. Because we're not going to solve it right now. So, research it, play with it, and.
Should we get council to draw some languages?
Yes, yes. Suggest some, take this and suggest some. Yes, yes, let's do that. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on from that. Favorite part of the, the agenda, item fourteen. Seeing there's no more business before this city council and this work session, I have a motion to adjourn by city council member Swannar. Second by council member Roskis. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating saying aye. Motion passing out.